Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The City Manager's Office has expressed Councilmember Cordero's request to participate in today's meeting remotely. Madam Clerk, can you please provide the council with the necessary information?
Councilmember Cordero is requesting approval from the council to participate remotely in today's open and closed session. Per AB 2449, Councilmember Cordero is requesting remote participation via emergency circumstances due to a physical or family medical emergency that prevents him from attending in person. If council approves this request, Councilmember Cordero must participate by audio and video and must disclose those 18 years or older that are present in the room with him prior to each vote.
I move to allow Councilmember Cordero to participate in today's meeting remotely. Do I have a second?
Second.
The vote will be a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of April 2nd, 2024. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Mayor Potem Soto?
Here.
And Mayor Patino?
Here. Now, we have an open public comment period, and we have four speakers. And Matt Cherkoff, followed by Andrew Klein, followed by Jeff Lee, followed by Scott Bramson.
Good evening, City Council, City staff, members of the public. My name is Matthew Cherkoff, Fire Captain and President of the Santa Maria Firefighters Union. We had the opportunity to meet your representative the other day at the table, and he was finally honest with us. After six months of negotiating, and now almost 100 days out of contract, he finally communicated to us that you don't care about your firefighters or our pay. You don't care that firefighters are the second lowest paid firefighters in the tri-counties market, while the top step pay for our fire chief is the highest paid fire chief in the tri-counties market. You don't care about our retention issues that affect our ability to provide service to the community. He said our 40% loss rate is normal. And quite frankly, this should be a sobering message to the community that you don't care about their safety. Now that this message is out, be honest with your voters, and tell them you have no intention of compensating your firefighters fairly and any of your rank-and-file employees, except your police department. He made another comment that everyone needs to hear. He stated that firefighters are not among your priorities, which is evident if you've been watching City Council these last few weeks. City staff continues to put projects in front of you for your approval to the tune of $20 million total in these last few months. And if you don't approve it at one meeting, they bring it back to you and ask again. He also said the city isn't even remotely claiming an inability to pay. We believe we're about $400,000 apart of reaching a deal. This is not even half of the funding City Hall has asked you to approve twice to make the temporary ARPA positions permanent, which you have not approved. But don't you worry, City Hall will be bringing this back to you during the budget hearings to ask for your approval again. City Hall clearly believes you can afford it, and they are telling you not to pay your firefighters. And you are listening. It's interesting, when City Hall has needs, they find ways to fund it and get your approval. Collectively, City Council, you've made many decisions that have infuriated your firefighters. Your decisions have lit such a fire within my membership to hold out for change and to hold you accountable. That is why we are taking our message directly to your constituents, to the community, and to the high propensity voters that turn out year after year, and we will not stop until there is change. I've provided four council members quarterly updates on our salary survey last year to show you how your actions and prior councils' actions have contributed to our pay problems, which directly correlates to our recruitment and retention issues, leadership turnover, lack of succession planning. I would have provided the same to the mayor, but she refuses to talk to us and pretends she doesn't know who I am. She won't even speak with us about a dead firefighter, Alva Newton, who died while protecting this community around the corner from here. And now your representative is saying we need to compare with the different market or eliminate the existing market because you simply do not want to pay your employees fairly. These last couple of weeks, we lost two more members to other agencies.
Thank you, Mr. Cherkoff.
And Fire Admin has lost three members alone this year.
Andrew Klein, followed by Jeff Lee.
They're making headlines for all the wrong reasons.
Followed by Scott Bramson.
You should be ashamed.
Good evening, elected city officials and city staff. My name's Andrew Klein. I've lived in the Samaria Valley since 1988. I'm a proud member of San Maria Firefighters Local 2020. Being observer to the situation we're currently in, I've noticed a few things in this chamber. For the past three months now, when speakers have been presenting topics of concern and important information, the gentleman to my right and also members on the podium have repeatedly disrespected and ignored the people speaking. The shuffling of papers, side conversations, and lack of attention to the people's words is embarrassing and rude. I respectfully ask that the appropriate mannerisms are exercised for anyone speaking, as they deserve your undivided attention, as we have exercised that towards you. Mayor Patino, from your teaching background, if this was your classroom and people were not acting responsibly as others were talking, what would your response be? All of you are not listening to our firefighters. You're also not acting what you said you would do before taking office. This is not the Samaria-style way of doing business in our city. This is part of the reason why we're here today. For being the guardians of the city and the protectors of life, our firefighters deserve and have earned a little more than what you've given. Our profession is a constant battle of life and death. Each day is unpredictable. Not everyone can be a firefighter or do all the things that we do. If we don't perform our skills correctly and make split-second decisions, ourselves and the citizens we protect would sire dire consequences. If you went to your favorite coffee shop and they didn't make your drink to order, they'd simply remake it, and life goes on. We do not have the luxury in our line of work. Naturally, firefighters are built to not fail nor do we accept failure. This is why we're constantly training out in the streets, learning the latest innovations to give our citizens the best possible outcome in a bad situation. We do this at great risk to our own safety and lives, potentially losing our own. What we're asking for is not a lot, and until you receive service from us in your time of need, you'll never truly appreciate what we're all about. In closing, H. Jackson Brown Jr. once said, "Live so that when your children think of fairness, caring, and integrity, they think of you." What would your kids and family think of the way you've treated all the city's firefighters thus far? Thank you.
Jeff Lee, followed by Scott Bramson.
Before we get started, I just want to say I think it's incredibly rude and disrespectful to cut off Mr. Cherkoff when you've got four speaker slips to not allow him to finish his thoughts. Good evening. My name is Jeff Lee. I'm a business representative, political coordinator for Teamsters Local 986. I'm the chairman of the San Maria chapter of the Central Labor Council. The Central Labor Council is a coalition of 70 labor unions and organizations throughout the central coast, and our mission is simple: advocate for working families. I want to read to you just a couple of the affiliated labor unions and organizations that we represent that are affiliated specific here in San Maria. We have the California Nurse Association, California School Employees Association, that's CSEA, California Federation of Teachers, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, iron workers, laborers, machinists, the National Association of Letter Carriers, those are your postal workers, SEIU 620 and 721, that's the San Maria City and Santa Barbara County employees, steel workers, Teamsters, which is my favorite because I represent them, that's your Coke, Pepsi, 7-Up, UPS drivers, 700-plus Vandenberg employees that live here in the city of Santa Maria, Mission Linen, Oak and Ike Cable, Santa Maria Regional Transit, Bimbo Bakeries, we've got the United Domestic Workers, UFCW includes eight major Santa Maria grocery stores, your Albertsons, Food Max, Foods Co., Bonds, Rite Aid, CVS, United Farm Workers, and of course, the Santa Maria Firefighters Association 2020, which is sitting behind me. There's three of you up for reelection this year, and the CLC is who you're going to come to when you ask for support. It encompasses, in addition to what I named, the rest of the labor in this area. In the 2020 election, the mayor seat, Mayor Patino, 18,129 votes to secure that seat. Councilmember Escobedo, 2,361 votes. Councilmember Cordero, 5,355 votes. Now, I can tell you we've got those votes covered pretty easily with labor. But I'm here to tell you that when it comes to what we're dealing with right now, don't ask for our help tomorrow unless you're willing to stand with us today. And right now, these council members aren't doing it. Stand with us, stand with our brothers and sisters here, and give them a fair contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott Bramson?
Good evening, City Council. As of yesterday, all of McDonald's fast food employees, on the average, received a 20% to 25% pay raise of a minimum of $20 per hour. Minimum wage for healthcare workers in California is now $25 an hour. Starting pay for firefighter EMTs in the city of Santa Maria is about $26. If you don't know, our job is much more than suppressing fires. As EMTs, we respond to medical emergencies every day alongside AMR and are responsible for doing whatever it takes to keep people alive until they reach the hospital. Drug overdoses, cardiac arrest, gunshot wounds, stabbings, car accidents, I could keep going. Hardly above fast food minimum wage is unacceptable. Today, you will be voting to approve a contract for public safety managers. This includes a 10% raise over two years along with other benefits. Some of these managers have already received a 20% pay raise within the last year. This will make the fire department leadership compensated at the highest levels on the central coast. Meanwhile, the rank-and-file of this organization is asking to be paid average, and yet you won't even consider it. The excuse for the interim city manager was it's a gap we just cannot bridge. Now, we're told from the city's negotiator, it comes down to priority, but we are not claiming an inability to pay. In other words, you just don't think we're worth it. At a previous city council meeting, you asked our fire chief if we had retention problems. He essentially said no. He's our department head, but he's only worked for this fire department for less than 18 months. This is not nearly long enough to even witness a retention problem. Quite frankly, it's a slap in the face to some of the members that have been here for well over a decade, and I've told you time and time again, we do indeed have a retention problem. We have no reason to lie to you. In the last month alone, we have lost two members to other agencies with higher wages and smaller workloads. These are just two of several examples since I was hired six years ago. The people we are losing are the future of this agency. And let me put it into context, it's easy to hire new people into the firefighter rank. It's not easy to hire new fire engineers and fire captains. It takes years to become proficient with institutional knowledge about this city and master the trade. These are leaders who have to make decisions in life or death situations. The positions above the firefighter rank are essential to growth. Who are your future engineers and captains? The people leaving and the replaced with entry-level employees. We are at the brink of promoting people because we have to, not because they're ready and it's dangerous. You cannot hire more people and expect retention issues just to disappear. If we lose any more experienced firefighters, the plan of opening an engine at Fire Station 6 is going to become a pipe dream. This year alone, our fire administration has lost three of its office staff. This seems to be a never-ending pattern, not a coincidence. Morale amongst the employees at the fire department is at an all-time low, especially when our own leadership won't advocate for pay on our behalf of fair pay, while they themselves happily take hefty raises and tell you we have no retention issue. Based on the comments from the city negotiator, we know that we are not the priority and money is not the issue. I ask that you reconsider your stance on one of the several offers for a new contract because many of us feel we are the last priority. We deserve better, and your constituents deserve better.
Thank you, Mr. Bramson.
Thank you.
This closes public comment period. The City Council will now recess to a closed session and will reconvene to the regular meeting portion of the agenda at 5:30. I would like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting for April 2nd, 2024. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Mayor Potem Soto?
Here.
And Mayor Patino?
Here. City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you like to give a closed session report?
Just thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. With respect to items 3A and 3B, particularly with respect to 3A, instructions were provided to the negotiating team. With respect to 3B, information was provided to our upcoming meeting on Saturday. Now for the report, ma'am.
Thank you. Proclamation for Donate a Life. Councilmember Escobedo will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today, I have the pleasure and the honor to present this proclamation for Donate Life Month. Whereas organs, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expression of compassion to those in need, and more than 110,000 individuals nationwide and more than 23,000 in California are currently in the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average, 22 people die each day while waiting. And whereas the need for donated organs is essentially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and American, African-American communities, and a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and the small intestine can save up to eight lives in American communities. And whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others, and organs donors saved more than 46,000 lives last year, the most ever, and any person can register to be an organ. Eye and tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions. And whereas being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in the emergency. And whereas the California residents can sign up for the Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or for Spanish speakers, www.donenvidaCalifornia.org. Or California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when applying for or renewing their driver license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. And whereas California residents' interest in saving a life through living kidney donation might visit www.livingdonationcalifornia.org. Now therefore, Alice Empatino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria hereby proclaim April 2024 as Donate Life Month in the city of Santa Maria. In doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes online when applying for or renewing their driver license or ID cards at the DMV. And by the way, just want to mention, last time I renewed, first time, I put yes on donor. So this is when I used to have a mustache. So, but it's the same guy. And here to receive the proclamation is Scott Burns.
Good evening, Mr. Burns.
Good evening. Thank you. I appreciate the proclamation. This will be down in Los Angeles for the annual run walk, which will happen in the end of the month, and then it'll end up at the DMV, just so people can see it throughout the year. The last time I was at the run walk, the lady whose kidney I have, we have a team celebrating Vivian's life, Vivian Vutel.
Wow.
With her and her family. I ended up, 2011, getting kidney issues. 2012, I was on the waiting list for a kidney. 2015, I'm on a friend's sailboat at Santa Cruz Island, the harbor patrol comes up and goes, "Mr. Burns, we have a kidney for you." I ended up going home with the harbor patrol because they're a lot faster than a sailboat, and the next morning, I had a fully functioning kidney.
Oh, my God.
The good news is, not only that, the rest of the story is Vivian ended up donating her kidney, donating a kidney to me, a kidney to someone else, liver, lungs, and heart. Saved five people that time. So we are very happy that it's happened for me, and I've been honoring Vivian for the last nine years by giving presentations like this. Last Rose Bowl parade, she was honored at the Rose Bowl parade float for Donate Life, so we're very happy for that. A couple of small items to keep you in the loop. Right now, there are, and I'm going to cheat, forgot what I was going to say. Thank you. Donate Life now has an office, or will have an office in a couple of months in Carpinteria to make it easier for them to work with the hospitals in our area, because they used to be out of Rancho El Zuzo. So this will make it easier. The other thing, about a month ago, someone received a pig kidney, and he's doing very well with that. And so things are happening, but they're not happening that quickly that we still have the waiting list that you talked about. But things are moving forward. The last thing is, right now, 97% of the people that sign up for the donation do it at the DMV to be an organ donor. Right now, people only go to the DMV about once every five years. So California last year passed a law, AB 1268, which makes it, starting next year, at your California income tax return, you'll have the opportunity to also say yes for an organ donation, so hearing about it annually. Thank you very much. I'm going to, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions?
Or I'll just walk away.
No. Thank you so much, Mr. Burns, for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next proclamation is for National Community Development Week, and I will be making the presentation. Whereas the week of April 1st through 5th, 2024, has been designated as National Community Development Week to recognize and celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program. And whereas since 1974, the CDBG program has provided annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and basic human services. And whereas since 1990, the home program has created and preserved affordable housing for low-income families. And whereas annually, the city of San Maria receives an average of 1.4 million in CDBG funds and an average of 300,000 in home funds. Now therefore, I, Alice Empatino, Mayor of the City of San Maria, do hereby recognize the week of April 1 through 5, 2024, as National Community Development Week in the city of San Maria, and to celebrate and showcase the programs and projects which are funded by the federal grant programs like Community Development Block Grants and Home Investment Partnership. Witness thereof, I have here to have set my hand and cause a seal of the city of San Maria to be affixed here to the second day of April 2024. And here to receive this is Community Programs Division.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Rosie Rojo. I'm the Community Programs Manager, and joining me tonight is Grant Specialist to Alicia Vela and our Housing and Community Services Technician, Eliana Delgado. The three of us make up our, can you see? Yeah, our Community Programs Division. On behalf of our division, we want to thank the City Council for your continued care in utilizing these funds to help improve the lives of our community. And later tonight, we will come before you to decide on those funds for the upcoming fiscal year. But right now, we just wanted to say thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for all the hard work you do. The next proclamation this evening will be for National Library Week, and Councilmember Soto will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is my honor to present this proclamation for National Library Week. Whereas National Library Week was created in 1958 as a national observance sponsored by the American Library Association and libraries across the country to celebrate the contributions of libraries and librarians. And whereas the theme of National Library Week, Ready, Set, Library, promotes the idea that libraries are places for the community to connect with others as well as resources to positively impact their lives. And whereas the San Maria Public Library is committed to upholding the values of the National Library Week and encouraging community members to discover and connect with the library's diverse collection of materials and resources. And whereas the San Maria Public Library is celebrating National Library Week by hosting a variety of programming embracing patron curiosity through library of things collection, Makerspace program, and substantial resources on its website. And whereas the San Maria Public Library strives to meet the needs of the community through enhanced collections, thoughtful programs, and outreach services. And whereas librarians are trained professionals and help people of all ages and backgrounds to find and interpret the information they need to live, learn, and work. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of San Maria, hereby recognizes April 7 through the 13th as National Library Week in the city of San Maria and encourages our residents to connect with fellow community members at the city's public library or one of its branches for curating, programming, technology, and early literacy skills in continuing education support services. And to receive the proclamation, we have Charlie Baker Boyd, part of the Board of Directors.
It's really cool.
It's really cool. Good evening, Mayor Patino, and council members, and everyone else here tonight. We want to thank you for the recognition of National Library Week and the positive impact that libraries and their very hardworking staff have on our community. The theme of this year's National Library Week is Ready, Set, Library. And we're inviting the community to get ready, get set, and connect with the diverse resources and services the library has to offer, which all go well beyond just books. The library collection is items ranging from computers and 3D printers to music, movies, and home arts. Library programs like Tech Help Saturdays and Sundays and Tech Made Easy teach new skills to patrons of all ages. The library brings people together by hosting a variety of book clubs for a variety of interests, and even provides book clubs in a bag for people to host their own book clubs at home. The calendar is packed with activities like Storytime, Arts and Crafts, STEM workshops, musical concerts, yoga classes, movie nights, and support for veterans, travelers, job seekers, entrepreneurs, and students. That's just a small sample of the services and resources that connect the community and make the Santa Maria Public Library the premier library on the Central Coast. So after you're ready and set, go visit the Santa Maria Library, its Bookmobile, or one of the branches the Santa Maria Library serves in Orchid, Koyama, Los Alamos, and Guadalupe. Thank you again for your recognition and support, not just this week, but throughout the year.
Hey, I have to share a story. I was back east. This has been practically when the library was pretty, still brand new. And I had went, I had gone back there for a conference. And a friend of mine was from Reading, Pennsylvania. And she told me that I was gonna go stay with her for a couple of days and we were gonna go to the conference. And her city manager told her that Santa Maria had really a nice library. So we were well-known even back there on the East Coast. Thank you. The next proclamation is a proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Councilmember Soto will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the City of Santa Maria recognizes that the United States Congress enacted Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which was amended by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 as the directive for fair housing. And whereas fair housing laws outlined by said acts guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunities for our residents of the United States, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, disability, or familial status. And whereas the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development declares the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month. And whereas the City of Santa Maria contracts with Legal Aid Foundation of Santa Barbara County to perform random testing of fair housing practices of landlords and property managers, reviews local newspapers for evidence of housing discrimination, and assists in resolving discrimination disputes through litigation or referral, makes presentations to Santa Maria adult adult education classes regarding rights of single parents and ethnic minorities to equal housing opportunities, and conducts community workshops to educate landlords and property managers regarding fair housing. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages the continued celebration of equal housing opportunities and the progress made in opening the doors to housing opportunities for our residents of Santa Maria. And this proclamation today will be accepted by Victoria Orchid from the Legal Aid Foundation.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for this proclamation. Once again, I'm Victoria Orchid. I'm managing attorney from Legal Aid Foundation of Santa Barbara, where the bulk of our cases are housing cases. We help folks through the eviction process, primarily representing them and filing an answer to complaints and attending the settlement conferences with them. And I'm proud to say, the majority of the time, we help folks move out according to their timetable that works for them, and they avoid getting eviction on their credit report. We look forward to the fair housing testing that's scheduled for later on this month. And overall, we look forward to educating the community on fair housing issues. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next proclamation for this evening is for National Sexual Awareness Month. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez will be making the presentation.
So I have two that are gonna go to North County Rape Crisis. So I will read both of them.
Sure.
Whereas National Sexual Assault Awareness Month is an annual campaign to raise public awareness about sexual assault and educate communities and individuals on how to prevent sexual violence. And whereas people of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds fall victim to sexual violence, which is widespread and impacts every person in the community. And whereas rape and sexual violence of all kinds continue to occur at an alarming rate, more than one in three women and one in four men will experience sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas emotional and physical scars resulting from sexual violence are often permanent, therefore, working together to educate the community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions is so important. And whereas a coalition of organizations exists that directly confronts this crisis, including North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, law enforcement agencies, churches, healthcare providers, and volunteers from the community that serve these agencies who are helping in the effort to end sexual assault. And whereas prevention is possible when everyone gets involved by increasing education, awareness, and community involvement, recognizing the compassion and dedication of the individuals involved in this effort, and noting the challenges of the victims, survivors of sexual assault, and their families and friends as they struggle to cope with the reality of sexual violence. Now therefore, the Mayor, Alice Patino, hereby recognizes April 2024 as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents and businesses to participate in a month full of recognition and activities promoted by North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center to increase awareness of sexual assault and to create solutions in an effort to eliminate sexual violence from this city. Therefore, she here to sets her hand and has caused a seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed here to the second day of April 2024. And the next one is for National Child Abuse Awareness Month. This proclamation is, whereas child abuse and neglect are a community condition and problem, and finding solutions depends on involvement among people in the community. And whereas Child Welfare Services had 2,748 referrals for possible abuse in the Santa Maria Valley in 2022 and 2023. And whereas the effects of child abuse and neglect are felt by communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center and its partners have been committed to educating the community on child abuse and neglect, and are sponsoring several events throughout the month to heighten public awareness of abuse in the northern county of Santa Barbara. These events will provide information and materials that support families to prevent child mistreatment and celebrate people to work with and support children and families. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, school youth organizations, religious organizations, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community and residents. And whereas all residents should become more aware of the importance of prevention in the community and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe nurturing environment. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, the Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes April 2024 as National Child Abuse Awareness Month in the City of Santa Maria. It calls upon all residents, community agencies, religious organizations, and businesses, and medical facilities to increase their participation in an effort to prevent child abuse. Therefore, she witnesses and has here to set her hand and has caused a seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed the second day of April 2024, and to receive these proclamations as Alice and Wales of the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center.
My favorite city council. Thank you so much. As we stand here today, we can't help but be united by the cause that demands our attention, our compassion, and of course, our action. April marks the observance of Child Abuse Awareness as well as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. It is a reminder of the vulnerability of our children and the need to continue to educate our community in what sexual assault, harassment, and abuse truly are. Child abuse takes many forms, from physical and emotional harm to neglect and exploitation. For the past several years, we have planted pinwheels across the North County to raise awareness of the abuse that occurs in our communities. In the Lompoc region for last year, in 2023, 922 cases were investigated. In the Santa Maria region, while it was noted that it was over 2,000 referrals were given, there were actually over 1,900 cases that were actually investigated. While we're not covering the North County in pinwheels this year, we will be planning in Guadalupe, 395 pinwheels, representing one in five of cases investigated. This month serves as a call to action urging us to raise awareness, to educate, and to advocate for survivors everywhere. Each of us has a role to play as advocates, whether it's volunteering, speaking out against abuse, or attending our 50th anniversary annual auction on May 4th. And appropriately enough, it is called Raise Them Up. And we hope to see you there, with more information can be found on our website. Thank you for this recognition in raising our center up for the hard work that our advocates and staff do on a daily basis. And I'm leaving you a bunch of pinwheels. So if you feel, city staff like to photograph, feel free. And promote. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alice.
I can personally attest to all the work that North County Rape Crisis does, because I worked there right after college. It's an amazing organization, provides so much education to the community, to the families. They work with other organizations as well to really bring protection to the children and the sexual assault victims. So I do encourage everybody to attend the event, May 4th, 2024. It's at Persky Winery, beautiful winery, from 6 to 8. Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any slips for public comment?
We do, Madam Mayor. We have, we received one written public comment from Elena Di Perini, which was provided at the dais and has been published to the city's agenda portal. We also have two requests to speak.
Thank you. I have Andrew Foster, followed by Gary Hall. Mr. Foster? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. On the, the first meeting in February, it was mentioned that the police department was doing an exceptional job, and they are not linked to the government. Well, I have some things to say about that. I was arrested in the library for not wearing a mask. Okay, on, well, it was, okay, then, I was not allowed, then, I was not allowed to go into the courtroom without a mask on. So then, a arrest warrant was made for my arrest. Okay, so I didn't even know about that arrest warrant until almost a year later. And then I went to court. So the court document I have states that I was in, that I was arrested for trespassing and refused to leave private property not open to the public. Well, I was in the public library at 12:30 in the afternoon. And I went up there to use the microfiche machine. Well, the police, the first thing they say, "Well, this is private property." And I'm looking at public library on the wall. So they arrested me for that. And this is actually perjury. And I attest under penalty of perjury. I showed this to the police department. They don't care. That's not, they don't care about that. And I went to complain about the officer. And I was told after a few minutes, if I didn't leave the building, I would be arrested, probably for trespassing. That seems to be their go-to. Okay? Well, as far as the mask is concerned, okay, you need to be a doctor in order to prescribe a type of treatment for any kind of military, medical illness. Well, that mandate basically gave everybody a license to practice medicine. Okay, that was illegal. What they should be doing, businesses should be doing, is asking for a release of liability, a waiver. Okay, which in court, it says that you cannot, they cannot force a waiver on you that is unenforceable. So they forced a waiver on me, and then called the police and enforced it, which it's even states in the law. And I showed the officers the law, and he said, "How do I know this is real? Do officers do not, don't they know the law?" Well, in his statement, in his report, he says that they follow the penal code. Well, the penal code says that they can arrest as long as it's lawful. Well, the law says it wasn't lawful. So the police department is not doing, they're not enforcing the Constitution. They are enforcing government policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Gary Hall? Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and the citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Gary Hall. I am a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Manufactured Homeowners Team, or NISBIT. Our NISBIT goal remains to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current model lease has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. Achieving that goal would protect mobile homeowners from large rent increases and still can provide the park owners with a fair return. Over 100 other California jurisdictions have enacted effective rent stabilization ordinances and programs that have provided their mobile home park residents with the protection we seek. We continue to ask the City of Santa Maria to do the same. Again, I want to thank councilmembers Soto, Escovedo, and Cordero for passing the June 6, 2022, motion which reads, and I'll quote, "To examine the model lease agreement, looking for ways to improve it and to look at alternatives." While examining the model lease, the mobile home residents have identified and presented to the city four issue areas that need to be addressed, including participation, outreach, enforcement, and financial and economic terms. Interim Assistant City Manager Wu has already developed his first draft of an outreach plan. After an unfortunate delay, the mobile home residents have nearly completed our comments and recommendations, which will help ensure the outreach plan will support the outreach goal, which should be to engage all homeowners in mobile home parks and make them aware of the existence of the model lease and empower them to become informed consumers. That's gonna be no easy task, since many residents, even in the participating parks, do not know of the existence of the model lease program, don't understand it, and/or how it was meant to help them. Another example of the casual nature of the model lease participation is the La Maria Senior Mobile Home Park. Last December, that park was listed as committed to the model lease participation. Now in April, the residents still have heard nothing. We, the mobile home residents, are committed to continue good faith discussions and efforts to now meet the outreach goal and the overarching NISBIT goal stated. to now meet the outreach goal and the overarching NISBIT goal stated earlier. We are ready and willing to work with the city to achieve these goals with or without the participation of the park owners.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment. The next item is the consent calendar. Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
I have a line, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I move.
Okay. I have a mo -- do I have a motion?
I move.
To approve, okay. Do I have a second? Second. Have you heard the motion and the second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a public hearing item, the Block Grants Advisory Committee's recommendation for fiscal year 2425 CDBG Grant Program Drafted Action Plan. The presentation is to be made by Community Programs Manager, Ms. Rojo. Good evening, Ms. Rojo.
Hello again. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. We come before you tonight -- let me make sure -- oh, perfect. We come before you tonight to conduct a public hearing to receive comments as part of the drafted fiscal year 2425 Community Development Block Grant Plan, and consider the Block Grants Advisory Committee's recommendation for the allocation of CDBG public services and capital funds. In addition, council members will have the opportunity to allocate a total of $37,500 to public service programs. And finally, council is asked to review and approve the overall allocation and -- allocations and contingencies which make up the drafted fiscal year 2425 CDBG action plan. So a little bit about CDBG. It's a program administered by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD. CDBG's main requirement is that the city's activities and projects meet one of three national objectives, in particular, serve primarily low-to-moderate-income people and areas. Nearly two-thirds of the city's population is considered low-to-moderate income. This means that the majority of the city -- the city's residents will benefit from these CDBG dollars. On your screen, you will see a list of names. These are the wonderful men and women who have volunteered their time, spent hours upon hours reviewing applications, conducting site visits, and ultimately deciding on tonight's recommendations. We do have Chair Jason Tamura with us tonight, if he wouldn't mind -- oh, there he is. Definitely want to acknowledge him, as well as all of our committee members. Really, tonight's recommendations are a reflection of their hard work and the recommendations that they made after taking into consideration not only council's recommendations, but also the community's. Also on the screen, you will see your anticipated CDBG funding breakdown, and it's anticipated because we still don't know exactly how much we're going to get. Normally, around this time, we already have our final numbers from HUD, but the delay in approving the federal budget has also delayed our ability to get our numbers. So we're hoping to get those at least in the next couple months. So we are basing tonight's recommendations on the same amount that we got last year. Obviously, the hope is always to get more, but that's what our recommendations are, is just basing it off of the allocation we received last year. Next, you will see the funding priorities. As part of the funding process, the committee conducted a community needs meeting on Monday, July 31, 2023, to receive comments from the public and discuss the needs and priorities of the community. Participants spoke about the increased need to continue funding programs and projects that assist the unhoused, help the youth, and help those suffering from abuse, mental health, and/or trauma. The needs expressed are reflected in the existing CDBG funding priorities, and therefore, the committee recommended that the priorities remain the same as outlined in the city's five-year consolidated plan. The fiscal year 2425 priorities were adopted by the city council during the August 15, 2023 city council meeting. The process went as follows. A notice of funding availability, we call a NOFA, was issued on Thursday, August 17, 2023, and a mandatory pre-application workshop was conducted on Thursday, October 19. Applications were due on Wednesday, December 6, for both public services and capital. Staff received 18 applications for public services and five applications for capital funding. Also as part of the capital funding request is the city's request for funding to assist with the administrative costs associated with its tenant-based rental assistance security This past January, the committee broke up into five teams and conducted in-person site visits to learn more about the applicants and their proposed projects and programs. Afterwards, each team wrote a report about the agencies they visited. These reports were then shared with the rest of the committee members. The committee then held two public deliberations. The first deliberations took place on Monday, February 12, and applicants were allowed to go before the committee to answer any additional questions the committee had. The second deliberation session took place on Thursday, February 15. At this meeting, the public could only observe the deliberations process. Committee members discussed the applicants, utilized the information gathered, and voted on the recommendations that are presented to you in attachments F and G. Let's start with capital project proposals. During the Tuesday, October 3, 2023 city council meeting, direction was provided by the city council as to how the proposed capital projects should be ranked in order of priority. At that meeting, the city council expressed interest in all of the proposed projects, with the top projects being the sports complex, the minor home repair programs, and the unhoused transitional aged youth navigation center. And that's attachment G. On your screen, you will see a breakdown of that proposed allocation. The majority would go to public improvements, which would be the sports complex, followed by activities that assist those who are unhoused and disabled, and then the third would be housing-related needs. Now, again, because we don't know exactly how much we're going to receive, the committee did adopt contingencies in case we get more money or less money. So the contingencies proposed are as follows. This is just for capital funding. If we get more money, the additional money will go to the city's sports complex. If we get less money, then funding will be evenly removed from the city's project, which is a sports complex -- complex, community -- communifying Community Action Partnership, which are the minor home repairs and family service agency, with a maximum 5% deduction cap. If there is a reduction that exceeds that amount, the remaining amount will be removed from the city's project. Now, moving on to public services allocations. Regarding these allocations, the committee focused on programs and projects that address basic human necessities, meet critical emergency needs, assist the elderly, and prevent homelessness. And that's attachment F. Of those applications, 10 of the 18 public services applicants are recommended for On your screen, you will see a breakdown of how that funding looks. The majority will go to critical need, followed by elderly, then unhoused, and special needs. Due to the limited amount of funding, eight applicants were not recommended for funding. Staff and committee recognize that all of the agencies provide excellent and needed services throughout the community. However, there is limited funded -- funding available. Each agency's overall program budget was taken into consideration to ensure that even without the CDBG funding, the program could still be sustained and services could still be maintained, at least at some level. Now, these are the adopted contingencies for public services. It looks a little intimidating, but I promise it'll make sense. Should the city receive more funds than anticipated and is between $0 and $14,999, the funding will be distributed evenly to each agency with a recommendation under $20,000. So any agency that's currently being recommended under $20,000 would get additional funds. Up to that funding cap, because we do have a funding cap, which I will go into in detail in a bit. If the city receives in excess of $15,000 in public services fund -- funds, it will be allocated to Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley, which is currently not recommended for funding. If the city receives in excess of $15,000 but under $30,000, the funding will be allocated to Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley and then evenly distributed to agencies receiving under $20,000. The top four funded agencies will not be increased at that time. Now, if the city receives more than $30,000, then it will be allocated to Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley and Family Service Agencies -- Agencies Public Service Program. Now, if we get less funding, the top four recommended agencies will be reduced evenly. Now, if the amount received is less than $30,000, which means that we have $30,000 or more dollars in reduction, funding will be removed from Independent Living Resource Center and then reduced evenly from the top four recommended agencies. Now, I will preface this by saying that it denies allocations, your allocations. If your allocations somehow go contradict any of these contingencies, you could adopt additional contingencies to fit whatever your overall recommendations are. So when it comes to public services, each council member has $7,500 to add to an existing public service grant allocation. Each council member's allocation can be split between more than one agency or combined with another council member's $7,500 to fund an organization not recommended for funding to meet that $15,000 minimum. Please keep in mind that the maximum currently for any agency is $20,924, which is 10% of the overall public service funding. At this time, we will open the discussion on the recommendations before you tonight for capital and public service funding. Once the discussion is complete and public comment is heard, we suggest the council first discuss and approve the capital project allocation recommendations and its contingencies, that will be followed by council members making their $7,500 specific allocations to the public services category, followed by the overall approval of the public services allocation and its contingencies. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of Ms. Rojo? Mr. Cordero, what about you?
No, I have no questions, Madam.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. -- no, he didn't have any. Aguilar Hernandez?
I do.
Oh, Ms. Ro -- Soto?
Going back to the what-if scenarios, I saw that, yes, that if the city receives more than $15,000 but less than $30,000, it would be allocated to Fighting Back and then evenly distributed to the rest of the agencies receiving less than 20. But how -- how much funding would be determined for Fighting Back?
Fighting Back would get 15.
Oh, okay. Okay, got it. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions? Okay.
Sorry. Actually, I just thought of the other one. Going back to capital projects, not that I'm complaining because, you know, I'm all for the sports complex, but that is a very stark difference from the team recommendation to the committee recommendation. So I don't know if you all -- if you can elaborate a little bit on how you got to an additional $144,000 from the team recommendation? Because I think the team recommended $300,000, and the committee recommended $444,000 for the sports complex.
So that's a good question. So initially, the committee was trying to fund everyone, and that was the only way we could do it without cheating anybody. However, because at the time, too, the transitional aged youth navigation center, they were asking for $600,000. They were asking for twice as much. The reason they're being recommended for $300,000 is because we are collaborating with the county, and the county is putting in half if we are able to put in the other half. So that freed up quite a bit, which allowed us to then better fund the other nonprofits that applied for the funding, including the sports complex.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Cordero, anything from you?
I have no questions for you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, okay. So I've opened the public hearing. Any speakers, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We did receive one written comment from Hannah Rickman of the Food Bank, and we also do have one request to speak.
Okay.
Two requests to speak.
Oh, two, okay. Thank you. So I have Hilda Zacharias and Midge Nicosia, followed by Araceli Sension. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to be here. I'm Hilda Zacharias, and this is --
Midge Nicosia.
And we represent Community Partners in Caring, and I'm the new executive director. I'm going to say new for at least nine more months, because it's fun to say I'm the new executive director of Community Partners in Caring. And what we do is we care for our community through a program of volunteer -- volunteer angels, really, who help to change the lives of seniors in this valley. And what they do is they are the helping hand, or the non-medical helping hand of our community, and we help our seniors be able to stay at home, so we're protecting their housing. We help them be able to access their medication, so we're strengthening access to healthcare, and we help make sure that they have food, so we're able to address hunger. And we do that in a loving, caring way. And so we did not want to miss this opportunity to this wonderful audience and this wonderful community to say, "Come, join us at Community Partners in Caring." Because as a volunteer, every moment that you give to one of our seniors is a moment that improves their lives. And we also want to make sure that the CDBG committee know that this organization values their volunteerism. Because without their voices to help make those decisions, your job would be even harder. So we thank you for that. And Midge is going to share how you reach Community Partners in Caring.
Hi. Thank you for having us. Since we are a volunteer-based organization, we use volunteers to provide services to our seniors. Our seniors get their independence back through volunteer drivers, volunteer grocery shoppers, volunteer home delivery at pharmacy, and anyone can volunteer. It could be once a month, once a week, at your discretion, but we know you want to give back to the seniors who've given so much to the community. By calling Community Partners, you can reach out to me. I have our brochure with us and business cards and the council -- are the -- are you -- can I give them the number? Okay. Community Partners in Caring has a very simple number, 805-925-8000. Just ask for Midge, and I'll help you volunteer and really give back to our community.
And we want to thank the CDBG staff for -- And we want to thank the CDBG staff for helping us along. Sometimes people say, "Why do we work so hard for that almost $16,000?" Because to me, getting the approval of our city for what we do helps me to be able to raise other funds for our program. So, it's worth it. It's worth being mentored and supported by all the staff, and I appreciate your guidance. And we look forward to continuing to be good role models for what a CDBG-funded program is in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Then, Araceli, is that Sension?
Yes, Arcelia. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Arcelia Sension. I am the chief strategy of North County Program Services at Family Service Agency. I would like to thank the CDBG Committee for their diligence in reviewing and making recommendations for funding. We had the pleasure of hosting three CDBG committee members at our offices located at 105 North Lincoln. It's always fun getting to new, meet new friends and welcoming them into our space. We submitted two grant applications, one for public services, our long-term care ombudsman program, and one for capital campaign to secure our front office. Though we were not recommended for funding for the long-term care ombudsman program, I urge you to consider funding from your public services allocation for this critical program that helps ensure the safety and well-being of our elderly community living in assisted living facilities in Santa Maria. In addition to this, what's really critical is that the funding from the city of Santa Maria is important, as our long-term care ombudsman program from the area agency on aging requires a dollar-to-dollar match. So, that's really, really important. The Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program, or as we know it, LTCO, assists residents in long-term care facilities with issues related to daycare, day-to-day care, health, safety, personal preferences. Problems include, but not limited to, violations of residents' rights of dignity, physical, verbal, mental, or financial abuse, dietary concerns, medical care, therapy, and other issues. Our ombudsmen, they follow the wishes of the residents. So, they are there to support and empower residents, and if they cannot express their wishes, those of their representatives. These services are provided free, and all complaints are confidential. So, that means that we are not required to report to Adult Protective Services. Thank you for your consideration to ensure that seniors living in assisted living homes have their basic right to be protected and to live in a safe environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, we do have one request to speak on Zoom.
Okay. Go ahead.
Patricia, can you, can you hear?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Great. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Pat Kealan, and I'm CEO for Communify. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Block Council Advisory Committee and especially your Community Development Department staff, who are awesome, for all of their time and thoughtful deliberations for the CDBG public service and capital project recommendations. We know there are many, many worthy projects and really appreciate the difficult decisions they have to make. In particular, I would like to thank the committee and the city for the capital funding you have provided Communify's Safe at Home program in the past. This year, we are providing over 50 Santa Maria seniors and disabled adults with minor home repair services that allow them to remain safe and independent in their own homes. This funding has allowed us to install six modular ramps so that individuals can get to doctor's appointments and the grocery store and interact with family and friends. In addition, we're able to install slip-and-fall devices, such as grab bars and raised toilet seats, that makes bathrooms more accessible and safer. Now, we know that preventing slip-and-fall accidents can help vulnerable seniors and disabled individuals remain safe in their homes, avoid expensive long-term care, out-of-home care, and ensure overall a better quality of life. So, we're pleased to report that when seniors reach out to us for assistance, not only are we able to provide them with the Safe at Home program, but we're also able to assess their eligibility for other services, including assistance with rent and utility bills. In fact, more than 30 Santa Maria residents so far this year have not only been served through the Safe at Home program, but have also received additional assistance of up to $800 to help them with other bills. So, we're grateful for the support that you have provided, Communify, this year for the Safe at Home program, and ask that the city of Santa Maria continue to fund this critical service. Thank you so much. We really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kealan. Appreciate it. Okay, that closes public hearing. No more? Okay. I'll bring it back to the council to consider the committee's capital project allocations, recommendations, and contingencies. Ms. Jessica Beto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is it possible to go back to the presentation?
Yes, and we'll get it.
Let's go to, let's go back to the capital projects. When we talk about, I believe, the decrease or increase, increase of funding? Yeah. So, since our last, when we talk about the priorities for capital projects, we emphasize that the community sports complex is the number-one priority. Therefore, I would like to exclude that project from the option of the decrease in funding. I think that project, because it will benefit all Santa Maria, will have a bigger impact. I think I would, I would, I would suggest and recommend to just remove the sport complex out of the decrease in funding, in case we receive less money, that will not, that probably will not be affected.
How does that affect the funding for the other, if we're not going to decrease the sports complex? Like, if we decided not?
We would just stick with that first bullet under decrease in funding, and right now we have a maximum 5% deduction. We would just do even deduction. So, whatever we have as a deduction in capital, we would just take it off of Communify, Capslow, and Family Service Agency, and not from anyone else.
And still cap it at the 5% deduction?
No, because we are limited to how, I mean, if we, yeah, so it would be whatever it is. So, let's say we have a 10% reduction, then Communify, Community Action Partnership, and Family Service Agency would see a 10% reduction as well.
Mr. Cordero, any comments?
Well, here, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I agree in part with Ms. Escobedo that this is, it is a primary concern and importance for our, for our community. It's been a long time coming, but I don't really believe that it's fair to put it above other things in the community and that we take away from several other organizations to support that organization. Life is life. It is what it is, and if we end up getting something less, I hazard a guess that if we end up getting something more, we're not going to refuse to contribute that more to the sports complex. So, I would, I would think that we should leave it as it is and let the statistics fall where they may. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
And I agree with Councilmember Cordero, especially given that Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley needs us to match, right? And so, a reduction would impact that match that is required.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Soto, yes, that is why Fighting Back is not included in the reduction, because that $300,000 needs to stay at $300,000 in order for the county to match.
Right. Okay. Can I get a motion, one way or another?
I move that we approve the CDBG 2024-25 capital project recommendation allocations.
Second.
Okay. Moving to second. Any discussion?
Yeah. Just, my point, and I do understand the impact that this can have, what I mentioned, and it was in regards, you know, one of the, our biggest challenge in this, when we made this decision, is where the money will make the best of the benefit for everybody. So, a sport complex, you know, and I do understand I'm actually going to be voting for it, but my point was, the sport complex will be beneficial for everybody in the case of the organizations that will benefit just for their services for their own clients in this case. So, I do, you know, I definitely going to be voting yes on this for the, I will accept the?
The recommendation.
The recommendation, of course, but yeah, just want to emphasize that what was behind my comments, so, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Rojo?
Now, on to public services.
You knew that was going to be easier, right? That's why you did that one first?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, are we starting with the allocations?
So, we start with each individual allocation. Who wants to start?
I'll jump in.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a, thank you. I have a clarifying question regarding a comment that was made by Arcelia, and that was about, I think there was a mention about a match, if I'm correct. Is there, can you elaborate on that, or can you remind, remind me again, please?
So, each county in California has a long-term care ombudsman program, and the area agency on aging requires a dollar-to-dollar match. So, that is something that the program struggles to meet. You know, we have to do outside fundraising to raise that dollar-to-dollar match, and currently, you know, our budget for this program, there are some shortfalls. So, the funding from the city of Santa Maria would be crucial to ensure that we're able to meet that match. In addition to that, you know, the city of Santa Maria has the highest number of assisted living facilities in Santa Barbara County. So, that was something that I did not mention, but it is included in the application, and I think it's important to note that. And what we're seeing is that there's an increase in demand that not only resulted from COVID, but that has continued throughout. So, you know, our ombudsman, they conduct unannounced visits. They're not required to set up appointments. They go in there and they meet with residents and to ensure that their basic needs or rights are not being infringed upon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm ready to put a, I've known the Family Service Agency for a while, and I've seen firsthand their, their hard work, and it just, it was asked and mentioned, it's, you know, helping you guys, that $15,000, $50,000 will make, multiply, and that will benefit our, one of our most vulnerable portion of our community, that is, our seniors. So, I'm ready to jump in and put my, I'd say, the money where my, well, it's not my money, it's the money from the constituents for my mandate, so I'll put in my allocation to Family Service Agency.
And you need a minimum of $15,000?
And I will definitely invite one of our council, fellow council members to match that, so we can provide them with the minimum.
I'll match it.
You'll match it? Okay. So, I'll be at $15,000 on Family Service Agency of Santa Barbara County?
Yep. And I would like to allocate my $7,500 to Community Partners in Caring. I think it's so important when people show up and, to the council meeting and provide a comment and tell us why it matters for them to get the $15,000, even though it isn't a lot of money, it is a lot of money for this agency.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Currently, Community Partners in Caring is receiving $15,124. The $7,500 would put it over the 10% maximum?
Okay.
If council chooses to do, it's not much over, but it is about $1,000 over, if I'm doing the math correctly in my head. So, it's up to City Council if it wants to okay that, or if you would like to allocate the remaining amount to another agency.
Do you want to do the $1,000 to another agency?
Sure. Let me do some quick math in my.
Okay, so now?
My turn.
Yeah, I know, I know, but let me ask a question before I give you your turn. So, now, you know, I would say, I'd like to give my $7,500 to Fighting Back, but there doesn't, they have not been allocated any money, but if we get more money in, they will then be allocated.
Right.
Hmm?
15.
Up to 15, yeah.
Madam Mayor, you are correct. Currently, they are not receiving any funding. However, if we get over $15,000, as Councilmember Soto mentioned, then they will get funding. However, you can, if you and another council member want to put your money together, then we can replace Fighting Back with another agency of your choice.
Okay. Well, Mr. Cordero, what would, what do you want to do?
Well, she just threw a curveball into it, what I wanted to do. I was honestly contemplating with New Beginnings, because it's a very vulnerable and potentially more vulnerable as our society continues to move in this direction to some of these basically homeless people. They're living in their cars, many of them. But I think with all the work that goes on at Fighting Back, I would, I would acquiesce to do that and hope that we do get a little bit more. What would happen to the remainder, Rosie, if we do get a little bit more, then that would not necessarily need to go to Fighting Back?
Currently, the contingency states that if we get in excess of $15,000, it will be allocated to Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley. If you fund Fighting Back, we can replace Fighting Back with another agency of your choice.
Okay.
If we get over $15,000.
Choice of the council.
Yes, of the council's choice.
I would be in favor of New Beginnings getting.
The problem with New Beginnings is we have code, it conflicts with our code in parking, and it's been a problem in that, right?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, so New Beginnings is aware that we currently have an ordinance that does not allow for overnight parking. However, if they were to receive CDBG funds, they would utilize the funding for supportive services and outreach. to receive CDPG funds, they would utilize the funding for supportive services and outreach and other types of programs and activities that would benefit the unhoused.
You know, I think before we do New Beginnings, personally, this is my personal feeling, we've got Hope Village that is is brand new, and we've got a lot of outreach going on. I would like to see that sort of, the dust settle on all that before we insert something else in our community. Anyway, can can I, can we hold off on our specifics until we find out what kind of money we're getting? Because I don't even mind dividing mine up on the on the others that have received and didn't receive as much as they wanted.
Madam Mayor, let me see.
Am I confusing and making it difficult for you?
Let me look at the contingency. The other, so in looking, is there a way, I'm sorry, city clerks, is there a way to go back to, thank you so much, so I can show council the contingencies for public services? And here we thought we covered everything. We were like, oh, we're so ready for anything. Okay, so what we could do is see that first bullet where it says, should the city receive more funding than anticipated, and it's between 0 and 14,999. The funding will be distributed evenly to each agency. But now, since we're adding two additional agencies, we could just eliminate bullet point number two and then just default to the first one. And then if we get way more money, the other option could be to fund the next one in line. So when you look at your attachment F, they are listed in order of survey rank. So during deliberations, the committee members do a survey, and they each enter what they would like to see as far as allocations.
Okay.
And then this shows the collective ranking of applicants. So we could also do that where if it comes down to us being able to fund another agency, the next one in line would be COM, number 13.
Okay.
So basically, if I get it right, just change in bullet point number two instead of Fighting Back, change it for COM.
Change it to the next one in line, yes.
In line, right, okay.
That's another option.
Do you want to do that with Mr. Cordero?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, so you and I put in money for Fighting Back. If we get money, more money, then we just go down this line of recommendations?
Yes.
Mr. Tamora is nodding to me, yes, he would like to do that. And we just go down the list of recommendations from CDPG.
Okay, I'm for that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, okay. Got it?
Yes, thank you. One, we're gonna circle back, if it's okay, Madam Mayor, just to go back to Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez's allocation. There was a difference of $1,700.
Okay.
So it's totally up to you how you would like to distribute that funding.
So the first, so North County Rape Crisis is already capped out, right?
Correct. Currently, there, North County Rape Crisis is being recommended 20. You could cap them at 20,924, which would leave you still some money.
Okay, so let's do that.
Okay.
So give them 900 more dollars.
So 900 more dollars, which means you still have 800.
So the next one that hasn't, FSA is also capped out, right, because of the council members?
FSA is only getting 15 currently.
Okay, no, you can put that.
Okay, so so it would be 15,800.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do, we need a motion on this then? Okay.
I move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Can we get clarification on the motion?
Sure. On who did what, okay?
Okay.
Do you have it, Rosie?
Yes.
Good.
So the allocations are as follows. Fighting Back will receive 15,000 from Mayor Patino and Councilmember Cordero. Family Service Agency will receive 15,800. 7,500 will come from Councilmember Soto. Then the other 7,500 will come from Councilmember Escobedo, and 800 will come from Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez. And North County Rape Crisis is also receiving an additional 900 from Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez. And Community Partners in Caring is receiving 5,800 to max the amount to the 20,924 from Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez.
It's good math.
Good.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's the motion?
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. No further discussion? Okay, if not, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero? If that was for me, I'd go aye, but I cannot hear you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we've got you.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
You did a very, very, very good job.
And take it to the commissioner.
So that five of us understand you. I think that's marvelous. The next regular business item are technical amendments from April 2024 to be made by Senior Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Patrick.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Also, my favorite City Council, wasn't that nice earlier? So I will be presenting the April 2024 Technical Amendments Ordinance. This is something that our office presents once a year. We add different changes from legal changes that the state makes, different things for efficiencies that our department requests. So I will go through the ordinance section by section. So Section 1 of the ordinance amends Section 4-1.35 of Chapter 4-1 of the Municipal Code concerning general requirements for business taxes. This amendment allows the Director of Finance to issue refunds when appropriate and skips the step of going to the City Council. So this is for efficiency purposes. It lets our director make refunds that are appropriate in a more efficient manner. This was requested by the Finance Department. Section 2 of the ordinance amends Section 8-1.07 of Chapter 8.1 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code concerning applications for public services. This allows appeals from the Director of, or appeals that are brought to the Director of Utilities to go straight to the City Manager instead of the City Council. This aligns our municipal code for this section with what we do in other areas of the municipal code. Again, it's just for efficiency. This was requested by the Utilities Department. Section 3 of the ordinance amends Section 8-10.34 of Chapter 8-10 of the Municipal Code concerning water services. This clarifies that the rate increase provision of 8-10.34 applies to all rates in Chapter 8-10. Currently, we list specific rates, but we have had some renumberings that we've done, and this is a much cleaner way to do this. This was also requested by the Utilities Department. Section 4 of the ordinance repeals Section 8-10.35 of Chapter 8-10 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code concerning water services. This was a way that we increased rates that we no longer follow, so this repeal is being requested by the Utilities Department. Section 5 of the ordinance amends Section 8-12.1005 of Chapter 8-12 of the Municipal Code concerning wastewater collection. This amendment clarifies the user types that are Class 1 users for purposes of wastewater collection and treatment and disposal. And it aligns it with council adoption, adopted rates and classes that we've done elsewhere. Again, this was requested by the Utilities Department. Section 6, 7, and 8 of the ordinance amends Sections 8.11, 8-11.10, 14, and 16 of Chapter 8-11 concerning refuse collection and recycling. These updates include organics collection into our municipal code, and this is based off SB 1383 requirements for organic recycling. So we're cleaning up our laws based on the state laws to make sure that is considered in our municipal code. This was, again, requested by the Utilities Department. Section 9 of the ordinance amends Section 8-10A.03 and 8-10A.05 of Chapter 8-10A concerning cross connections. The amendment updates a reference we make to a manual from the 9th to the 10th edition requested by the Utilities Department. Section 10 of the ordinance amends Section 10, or amends Section 8-10A.06 of Chapter 8-10A concerning cross connections. This updates testing requirements to match our city's permits requirements. Again, requested by the Utilities Department. Section 11 of the ordinance amends Section 8-10A.08 of Chapter 8-10A of the Municipal Code concerning cross collections. This one, this one also amends the municipal code so that it matches our current city permit requirements. Section 12 of the ordinance amends Section 8-12.413 of Chapter 8-12 concerning stormwater running runoff pollution. This amendment clarifies that individual traps are required for each user to have, that has a wastewater discharge permit. Once again, requested by Utilities Department. Section 13 of the ordinance amends Section 2-16.01 of Chapter 2-16 concerning boards, commissions, and committees. This amendment extends the deemed resignation provision to all boards, commissions, and committees within the city. We previously amended this to allow for, whenever someone misses 25% of hearings, they could be removed from a board or commission, but we only had certain named commissions on there. So this would apply to all boards and committees within the city. This was requested by the City Manager. Section 14 of the ordinance amends Section 10-2.05 of Chapter 10-2 of the Municipal Code concerning park rules. This amendment allows the use of sound amplifying systems within the city park when authorized by permit from the Director of Wreck and Parks. So currently, this section bans sound amplifying systems without approval from the Recreation and Parks Committee. That's a very involved process, so we think that by doing this, it will speed it up. You might remember, we brought something similar last year, and we had included musical instruments in that ban. So Wreck and Parks is again asking you to consider adding musical, or adding musical instruments to this. It's a matter of enforcement for them. They're getting a lot of complaints about different musical instruments being allowed in the parks. The benefit for this amendment, as we have it now compared to last year, is that we're moving the permit process to the Director of Wreck and Parks, so it should be more efficient and easier for people to get permits. And this was requested by the Department of Recreation and Parks. So the recommendation today is to introduce the ordinance for first reading and adopt it at second reading at your next council meeting. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Cordero, any questions?
No, no questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I do have a question about the ordinance for the music. Is that the one we amended last year?
Yes, it's the same one. So last year, we added, currently it says, any sound amplifying systems, and it says including but not limited to, and we added portable speakers and amplifiers. The Department of Recreation and Parks had asked for musical instruments to be included in that as well, but that was removed. So this amendment includes musical instruments and vehicle stereos. And then the change that we're adding is that instead of going to the Recreation and Parks Commission, we'll be able to go to the Director of Wreck and Parks to get those permits, or the public will be able to. So it should be a much quicker process for them to actually be able to play musical instruments in the parks.
Any questions?
Yeah, I think I, for me, I have a problem with adding musical instruments to the ordinance. I understand if the permitting process, you guys want to make it faster, but I disagree with adding musical instruments, as I stated the last time. You know, I don't know why it keeps coming back, but my my position was pretty clear last time.
I agree.
What can I say? I'm thinking, Councilmember Aguilar, Councilmember Soto, definitely these, I get it with the amplifiers, with the auto stereo, but instruments, I do not, I do not, I would not support something that would limit the ability for one of our constituents to go and practice or have some fun with a, with an instrument. And so I stayed on the same, on the same, on the same position of May 2, 2023, that musical instruments shouldn't be by themselves. I mean, if they're not, you know, you're having a big stage with a lot of music, with speakers, that's, that's different. But by itself, I don't think that's a, that's a way we, we should be going towards regulating to that point. I don't, I don't see that as something I would support. So I would, I would support the ordinance, but without the musical instrument.
Okay, Mr. Watson?
Madam Mayor, then, if that's the pleasure of the council, which it does appear to be, we would recommend that you move to approve the ordinance with the words "musical instrument" stricken from Section 14. And bring it back for a second reading.
I also wanted to mention, because I asked this, I don't know why it was brought back, if the council is the same, and we made our position pretty clear last time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez, the complaints continue from residents. It's not something that the staff wants to go out and have to enforce, but the complaints continue to come in. It's not so much, you know, an individual showing up with a guitar and playing a guitar in a park. It's four or five people with tubas and bugles lined up against the fence at one of the parks behind somebody's house. The complaints are consistent, and we just certainly want to make sure that you, the council understands that it is our residents bringing these complaints forward.
It might, it might be a good idea to start directing the complaints to us so that we know, you know, that they're happening. Okay. Mr. Cordero, any comments from you?
No, I'll make a comment on my vote. Thank you.
Okay. I'll bring this back to the council for any discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, any communications?
No, not for this item.
I'll bring this back to the council for any discussion or questions.
No.
Nope. Okay, okay, can I get a motion?
I move.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I move that we approve the technical amendments.
Oh, with the exception of?
With the exception, as stated by the city attorney, to remove musical instruments.
A second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
I'll tell you what, in the future, when we have any of those complaints, can you please let the council know about that? Because
Yes, we'll make sure.
We're not, we're not hearing it, so.
We'll make sure that
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I hear it, I may like it, I don't know.
Yeah. The next item will be a report by interim City Manager, Mr. Pasada.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, just hitting very quickly on the upcoming agenda items. I sent out today an email. We're gonna start sending out the, what we call the UAI to council members, so you have an idea what's coming in the future on the agenda. That way, if you have any questions with something, or maybe the timing of something, you'll be able to see that, and not having to wait for the City Manager to tell you what's coming up. Those will be sent to you regularly from the City Clerk's office, and if you have any questions, feel free to to bring them to to my attention or to the Clerk's office. Coming up on April 16, we have a closed session scheduled for labor and City Manager recruitment. The chamber will be here doing their Business of the Quarter presentation. We are proclamating We have Proclamation for National Day of Prayer. Transit System, potentially, will be making a presentation. They're working on that. There is also the Transit Physical Year Grant Application. That'll be brought forward by Public Works. Recreation and Parks has two items that it'll be bringing to you. Both of them involve sorry, one of them involves a consent calendar item, which is the Leisure Needs Assessment that they're moving forward with. And then the second is the Urban Forest Master Plan, which will be a regular business item. We will have a presentation by the consulting firm that worked on that project this past year. On May 7th, again, closed session scheduled. We're not sure if we'll be using that session, but it's available. Proclamation and presentation, Water Awareness Month, brought to you by the Utilities Department. Proclamation on Go Rodeo Days, that will be coming up. And Peace Officer Memorial Proclamation will be coming forward. Employee Housing and Resource Officer Report. And Regional Task Force on the MOBEX Agreement and Appropriations. The Engineers Report on Assessments, and that's coming from Wreckin Parks. That'll be the Landscape District Assessments for '24, '25. Those will be coming forward. We also hope to bring the presentation by the League of California Cities on the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. That's the proposition that'll be put out to the voters in November controlling the, the way that fees and charges are approved by the voters. Mr. Mullenex from the League will be here to make a presentation on that. The City Water Basin Policy, we plan to bring forward to you on that February 7th meeting. That's something that you might recall has kind of been floating around for the last several years regarding the, the stormwater maintenance of retention basins in subdivisions around the city. So we're bringing that forward. And last but not least will be the Third Quarter Financial Report. And that'll bring us to the May 21st meeting. I do want to announce that on April 6th, you'll be holding a special closed session at the Manami Center at 8:30 in the morning. This will be the closed session for interviews for City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Posada. And we'll do oral reports of council members. Should we start with you, Ms. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On March 21st, I participated in the City Manager's Recruitment Meeting. And March 22nd, I attend the Guadalupe Beach reopening at the Duden's. Great job, by the way. And also the same day, I attend the another session with the City Manager Recruitment. We had a follow-up meeting. And the evening, I attended Boys I was invited to attend the Boys and Girls Club Gala. Great, it was a great, it was a great night. Thank you for the invitation. And on the 20th, I had a meeting with, with the FSA Leadership. On the 26th, I attended Pills That Kill a presentation at Allen Hancock College. And the 27th, I was invited to participate and present to Oakley Elementary School to, as a career day. I was not so sure why they want to, they would like to become politicians. No, it was, it was great. And actually, I want to make a special recognition to the teachers and the students. There were so many good questions. They, I was expecting, you know, not there were some technical questions. I think the teacher really helped with that one. But also, they were asking things like day-to-day, how we are or that we also are, you know, regular people that are around, that we're not just the people that sit at this table. So that was, that was really, that was really funny, but really entertaining. What else, what else? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Aguilar Hernandez?
So I attended the APCD meeting on the 21st. I also attended the City Manager Meeting Recruitment also on the 21st and 22nd. On the 22nd, I attended the Santa Barbara Women of the Year Reception. I attended the Legal Aid Advisory Board. And I also attended the Women Lawyers Association on the 26th. And I also attended, I'm on the Marion Medical Community Services Board, so I attended the meeting for that as well. And that was it.
Ms. Soto? Thank you.
On Tuesday, March 26th, I attended a donor appreciation event at the Community Environmental Council, supporting the Fund for Santa Barbara. On March 28th, I attended the Foundation Board of Directors Meeting for the Allen Hancock College Scholarship Foundation. I did the Ben Hayes Show after the last City Council meeting, and those are my reportable items, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. March 19th, I did the Ben Hayes Show. That's the easiest part to do, it is in the morning, but rather than explain what we did the night before. On March 20th, I belong, I'm on the Project Opioid for Santa Barbara County, attended that meeting. March 21st, attended the SBK Monthly Board Meeting. And then I went to the League of California Cities Conference on Housing and Community Economic Development. And also attended that on March 22nd, League of California Cities Conference. There's a lot of bills on, that are going through committee. And I think it's 1.8 million that's going to be cut out of affordable housing. So don't look at anything being done in affordable housing this year. But the governor has cut that from the budget.
Is the state in a deficit?
Hmm? Yes, yeah, and besides, we're in a deficit. March 25th through the 29th, I got jury summons, but I didn't have to attend jury duty. March 26th, I went to the fentanyl awareness presentation by the Police Department where there was a mother that gave her the tragic story of her son. And we had a 14-year-old, I think it's been three weeks now, that died of fentanyl poisoning. He was smoking marijuana that was laced with fentanyl. March 27th, I attended the Marion Regional Medical Center Foundation. Went, that afternoon, went to the Police Department Badge Pinning Ceremony and Promotion. That evening, I attended the Altrusa Junior High Awards Dinner. And let's see, on March 29th, did the Ben Hayes Show. Did the Ben Hayes Show this morning. And then Rotary. I think that is it. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Cordero. I didn't see you
I have to report, Madam Mayor.
Are you sure you don't want to report anything?
Yeah, everything I want to report is not happy, so I'll just wait until I get back.
Okay, I would like to share an update that we have about our negotiations with Firefighters Local 2020. Our city workforce, the men and women who provide you with municipal services on a daily basis represent 10 departments, from public safety to streets to library services. All our departments do the best job they can with the resources available to them provided by your tax dollars. The next two-year budget is under development now. Financial projections show a significant gap in what tax dollars the city brings in and the costs of provided our residents and the services they have come to expect. The management of this gap is heavy on the City Council's mind when making all its financial decisions. What's best for our community is always the question. The City Manager will propose a budget in alignment with the City Council newly adopted goals. One key goal is long-term fiscal sustainability. This goal is essential to the city's ability to maintain service levels. The city and the Firefighters Union Local 2020 have been in negotiations for several months now. Many comments have been posted on social media, made at the City Council meetings, and given to the local media by the Firefighters Union. I would like to take this opportunity to make clear to our residents the efforts made by the City Council and city staff to come to an agreement with the Firefighters Union. While I'm not able to provide specific details, I can provide this overview. At the onset of negotiations, the city offered to provide the Fire Fire Union a financial presentation outlining the city budget status, similar to the report provided to the SEIU Local 620 prior to coming to an agreement with SAIU. The Fire Union canceled that scheduled meeting. The most recent, the City Finance Director was present at a follow-up meeting to provide financial information. The Fire representatives did not ask any financial questions. The city offered a Fire Union as a similar two-year agreement as SEIU Local 620. The offer was rejected. Recently, the city offered a one-year agreement to provide time for long-term agreement to be worked out, but was rejected by the Fire Union. We do continue to meet to negotiate in good faith with future meetings scheduled. The City Council makes public safety its top priority, dedicating over $78 million to our residents' public safety. This includes 47.8 from voter-approved Measure U and an additional 30.2 from the city's general fund. Thirty, that's 34, 30.2 million. Santa Maria firefighters, on the average, own, earn over $125,000 annually in total compensation. This March, the City Council approved hiring nine new firefighters to staff a new fire station. The City Council has a responsibility to manage the tax dollars paid by our residents and guests to provide not only fire services, but police, streets, planning, recreation parks, economic development, community facilities, at all come at significant cost. The City Council has a significant task of balancing all city services to benefit all city residents. All our city employees are resourceful, professional, and have an incredible work ethic. We are so proud of them and the work they do to keep our residents safe and enjoying living in our great city. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is adjourned.